Arizona Board of Appeals Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Remote participation meeting agenda in accordance with Chapter Two and the Acts of 2023, suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law, OML, public bodies otherwise governed by the OML are temporarily relieved from the requirements that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public. So long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. This meeting is will be held live on Zoom. Public may participate remotely by joining Zoom meeting ID number 85797287177, or by calling 312-626-6799. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Samantha Benoit, administrative coordinator at Espenoid at air dot ma dot U S, or 978-772-8220, extension 114, prior to the meeting. First item is to call a meeting to order. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Mike?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, all the favors signified by saying aye, state your name.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Olesai.
Ron, aye.
Very good. Sam Goodwin, aye. All right, before we get started on this, I want to make a couple of points. Everybody see a lot of people signed in, but I want you to understand this is not the forum to debate the merits of this project. How many bedrooms there are, how many baths there are, how many kids there are. It is not the intent of this board to do this. This board is the zoning board of appeals. We are here for three reasons tonight. They are all applications for variances to our zoning board laws. That is it. No more, no less. Someone wants to bring something else up, I will cease it, right? Stop there. We need to focus on what we're doing. That being said, we'll start out with the continuance public hearing application for variance building height. BMG Investments. Town of Arizona Board of Appeals, public hearing notice. Air ZDA will conduct a remote public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023 regarding the application by DMG Investments LLC for property located at 201 West Main Street, Air Mass. Applicant is seeking a variance pursuant to air zoning bylaws, section 10.5.16. C, building heights to increase the maximum building height. The four stories in T. 5.1 Philly Street Zone where three stories are allowed. For Zoom or call in information, please contact Espenoid at air dot ma dot U S, or 978-772-8220, extension 114. Advertised February 24th, 2023, and March 3rd, 2023, and then Choba Valley Voice. That being said, we have a representative of the applicant aboard.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Gibbons for DMG Investment, the applicant. And Kian Hamel is here from DMG, and he's going to just introduce himself in the DMG Investments LLC. But just one point, I think these these three variances are basically interrelated based on our lot shape and soil conditions. And I think that, subject to your approval, I think that we can handle these all as one. Whereas the initial meeting had certain meeting times and we had to wait for each of those times. I think the three of them would generally continue tonight to tonight at 6:00 PM. So we would like to, if it pleases the board, handle all of these variances with sort of one discussion.
I don't think we can do that. You made three separate applications, so we have to have three separate hearings and three separate votes.
Well, I agree with the three separate votes, but I think our conversation is going to be, you know, it's going to be the same for all three issues. So I think, you know, we could handle the certainly the presentation as, you know, one, one presentation and then three separate votes.
What presentation you have in mind?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go over the requirements for the variances, why we believe we need it. We'll give you a presentation on the site plan and then.
We don't, I, you, you did hear what I said when we started this meeting, correct?
I did, yes, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to focus on what we're supposed to be focused on. I mean, we, we, I suspect everybody, all of us have read things published in our package. You have a presentation, I would strongly suggest you make it brief. You're, you're, you can be heard. I mean, there's no question about that. But I don't want to spend four hours on a presentation that really is not germane to what we're talking about.
Yes, and I don't envision it being very long, but I just think the issues will be covered that will apply to all three variances. And if you want three separate presentations, I'll go through each element, but I think, you know, since the meeting time is 6:00 PM, I think we can cover all, all matters, but there will have to be three separate votes, absolutely.
You're absolutely correct. All right, go ahead and start. Has anybody in the board, yes, Mike?
Sam, just, just before we get started, could, could I ask everybody who's not presenting or on the board to put themselves on mute? I keep getting switched over to somebody in their car with the window open.
All right.
So, since we have three separate applications here, shouldn't they be just, you do one at a time, and we're not going to get into the other two until we decide the first one?
Well, I think what he's asking, John, is he, he want, he's gonna, he's got the same presentation for all three because they're interrelated. He wants to do one presentation and then, and then we can vote on three different applications.
When he wants to talk about the width and the parking, those are other hearings.
I understand that.
They are. The first part of the presentation to should dwell strictly on the request for the height.
What do you think, Mike?
I mean, I, I looked at the presentation that was forwarded to us. I, I think if that's the presentation Attorney Gibbons is talking about, it covers all three variances. We're going to have to take three separate votes. I would just as soon have them go through the presentation and then we'll, I'm sure have questions on each of the different applications and requests. We could go through them then, but, you know, I'm fine with what everybody, everybody's in favor of.
Jess?
Um, I'm, I'm actually would appreciate getting the overview presentation and then being able to focus on each of the specifics, so.
Ron?
I agree.
All right, well, that's what we'll do. We'll listen to your, your presentation and then we'll address each one of them at a time.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Kian Hamel will just introduce himself and then the team will introduce themselves and what their role is.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kian Hamel. I am with DMG, the applicants. We've spent the last 18 months working with the town of Air and formulating the presentation of the project that we're presenting this evening. We've spent a lot of time listening with feedback from the various departments. And the presentation that you're going to see tonight, we believe is the best step forward in accomplishing the short term and long term goals of the Air Master Plan. With that, I will pass it back to our attorney, Tom Gibbons, who will introduce our local consultant team from the wider Boston area.
So I think since we're on Zoom, it might be easiest to just have each of our team members speak, but as you know, my name is Tom Gibbons. I'm with the Law Office of Thomas A. Gibbons here in Air, and I represent DMG. Daryl?
Good, good evening, everybody. My name is Daryl Filippi. I'm an architect at Bergmeyer Associates, and I'm a principal in charge of the project.
Uh, good evening. I'm Drew Garvin. I'm with Bowler Engineering with a civil engineer for the project.
And just to, Isaac Smith is also with Bergmeyer. He's our housing design practice leader.
Thank you. So, thank you, board members. What before you tonight requesting three variances for the property known as 201, 205 West Main Street. 201, 205 West Main Street consists of two parcels that have been in common ownership in single use since approximately 2013, which predates the adoption of the Form-Based Code. 201, 205 West Main Street is located in the West Air Village Form-Based Code District. And one lot is located in the T. 5 Village Core section of that district. And the other is located in the T. 5.1 Village Street section of the district. They, they butt each other where it's really a single lot in our mind, but, but again, the, the two lots that make up this property straddles the, the two different sections in that district.
How did two lots become one?
So the, the land was purchased by an owner in 2000, one of the lots was purchased in 2006. The other was purchased by that same owner, but under an entity in 2009. But in 2013, they were sold to the current donor under one name, so it's a single owner, and I believe, you know, he's been using the combined lots for a single use.
But they are still six separate lots.
Well, they're separately taxed, two separately taxed lots. I think they're merged from, from both the zoning perspective and a practical perspective, but they do show up.
Is there, is there a registry of deeds showing they're, they're combined?
There is, there's a deed to a single owner, the current owner.
Has both the lots and one piece of property.
So there, there is shown on the assessors map as two separate assessed parcels, but a single owner used for one purpose.
Well, the, the point I'm trying to get at is if it's, if it's two separate lots, then you, you have frontage issues to begin with. Now you're telling me that they're combined, and I ask if there was a registry of deeds document showing that they have been combined.
So there is one deed to the current donor for both parcels, and so that, those lots are together. I mean, there isn't a separate subdivision plan because these lots are shown already on a subdivision at the registry of deeds. But it's one owner, a single current use.
So the answer is no?
I believe the answer is that they are a single lot. Now, the assessor hasn't combined them. I don't know why, but, but I think the fact is that this is our parcel that we're talking about, these two combined lots.
Question that because I, I looked on the Form-Based Map and it shows two separate parcels, and I was somewhat confused about how you had it laid out. How did you do that with the sing, with two separate lots?
Well, I'm, I'm quite surprised that, that the Form-Based Code, when it was developed in, I think, 2018, that they, you know, they didn't realize that this lot was owned by one entity used for a single purpose.
All right.
I don't think that ultimately matters. You know, merger can happen as a matter of law without action of, of an assessor.
Well, it would, it would adversely affect whatever proposal you were putting on the table, particularly when one of the applications was for frontage.
Right, frontage of the combined lots.
Well, that's not what it said, but we'll, go ahead, we'll get into it.
All right, so 201, 205 West Main Street consists of approximately 4.67 acres of land and has approximately 254 feet of frontage. DMG Investment LLC has this land under agreement for purchase contingent upon the approval of developments of the property with a new four-story mixed-use building consisting of 170 residential rental units located on floors two through four and commercial space located on the first floor. Of the 170 units, 21 will be studio units, 125 will be one-bedroom units, and 24 will be, I, I'm sorry, 21 will be studio units, 125 will be one-bedroom units, and 24 will be two-bedroom units. Of that, 170 units, 145 units will be market rate units, and 25 units will be affordable rate units. So the three variants that we seek from you tonight are as follows. A variance from section 10.5.16C to allow for four stories where three stories are permitted. A variance from section 10.5.16B to allow a lot width of 254 feet. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the combined lot is bisected by the T. 5 and T. 5.1 sections of the district. Maximum lot width in the T. 5 section is 260 feet, and in the T. 5.1 district is 192 feet. These, these lots, again, pre-exist the adoption of the Form-Based Code. A variance from section 9.1.2 to reduce the required parking spaces from 288 spaces to 172 spaces, and to increase the small car parking spaces to 20% where 10% is allowed. Now, I know this board is well aware of their authority to grant variances pursuant to the bylaw, section 3.2 B. 2 and Mass. General Law 48, section 10. With respect to our requested variances, it is our position that the, the need for the variances are based on lot shape and soil conditions of our lot. Our lot is impacted by flood plain and wetlands with associated buffer zone requirements. Due to the conditions, there is a good portion of the land upon which we cannot build. In addition, the land upon which the project is conducted is the combination of these two pre-existing lots that have been in common ownership and utilized as a single lot since at least 2013.
Ron, would you go on mute, please? Thank you.
Yeah, hold on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbons.
No problem. So the shape of our pre-existing lot includes frontage of 254.1 feet. Now, these conditions specifically affect our land, but not generally the zoning district in which we're located. You must remember that the Form-Based Code affects West Main Street that is a part of towns that has been developed and lots created back probably in the early to mid 1900s. Our lot shape and size is unique in this district. Our lot not, was not created from a larger lot post the adoption of the Form-Based Code. In this case, there's no argument that could be made that somehow we created our own hardship. Rather, the hardship is the result of the adoption of the new bylaw affecting these, this law. A literal enforcement of the bylaw will involve hardship, substantial hardship, not just upon the applicant, but upon the current owner and any future owner who would like to put this land into fiscally viable use that substantially implements the intent and purpose of the Form-Based Code. We also believe that the relief requested can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Now, I understand that other developers have met with various town officials regarding development on West Main Street under the Form-Based Code and have determined that development conforming strictly to the Form-Based Code is not practical or feasible. DMG has conducted substantial analysis of various parcels on West Main Street and has determined that as of right development are not practical or feasible. Without these variances, this project cannot move forward in development in this area of West Main Street that will implement the intent and purpose of the Form-Based Code and utilize the improved infrastructure on West Main Street that the town has recently spent, I believe, millions of dollars on, is not likely to happen. Now, section 10.5.8 of the bylaw states in part that the purpose of the West Air Village Form-Based Code is to, in part, incrementally transform Air's outer West Main Street corridor into a safe, healthy, attractive, and appealing great street for residents, customers, clients, visitors, and new investors. That section also states in part that the purpose of the Form-Based Code is to facilitate and provide more housing stock for all income and household-sized residents in order to enhance and accommodate greater job creation, corporate investment, and expansion within the town of Air. Now, in addition, the master, the Air Master Plan provides in the housing section of the master plan that housing goals for the town of Air are, should be to develop housing units that meet local needs, increase the variety of housing opportunities for Air residents, encourage housing development that is sustainable, affordable, and serves all members of the population, and to preserve the affordability and diversity of Air's housing stock. We believe that this project meets these goals, particularly taking into consideration other planned developments in other parts of town that provide for all affordable rate unit development. Now, before I hand things over to Drew Garvin to take you through the site plan, if, if the board desires it, and Daryl Filippi to give you a brief overview of the architectural concept, again, if you desire it, I would like to focus on section 10.5.8, the first paragraph. And I don't know if the board has their Form-Based section of the code, but 10.5.8 first paragraph talks about great street in quotes. I looked that up to see what exactly that meant, and I'm sure Alan Menoy, and if he's here, can give a great, greater detail about what that means. But a urban designer, Alan Jacobs, describes, quote, "Great streets" as those that make community and should be a most desirable place to be, to spend time, to live, to play, and to work. DMG's proposal will contribute to the start of making West Main Street a, quote, "great street" as set forth in the Form-Based Code. The only way that can happen, however, is if this board grants requested variances. And its variances that the Form-Based Code envisioned may be needed in certain circumstances as evidenced by the inclusion of a statement regarding deviations from the design standards in accordance with the bylaw. Now, with that, if it pleases the board, I'll, I'll hand it over to Drew, who can give you a quick overview of the site plan. And then, Daryl, if you wish, and then we can certainly answer any questions or concerns that the board might have.
Does the board wish to go through these presentations?
Yes.
I would too, Sam.
All right.
Uh, let me share my screen with the site plan. I think it's best to look at it as I describe it. So Daryl's got it. Thank you, Daryl. Um, yeah, so you're looking at our site plan as proposed. What you're looking at is the shaded area is the proposed building. And in the front section of the building has some retail space, and then you can see the entrance, uh, an underground entrance, if you will, first floor to the parking, which will be the first floor of the building, as well as an outdoor parking in the rear. Uh, the, so the retail is in the front, the, there's three stories of residential apartments above. And this first floor, as you see it with the parking striping, will be allocated to parking. Uh, we did some, some preliminary work with the fire department to make sure uh, we accommodated for all access and safety access for their vehicles. Not only can they entrance a, as you normally would and, and access the full area of the first floor of the building, but we've also allowed for a secondary entrance flanked off to the right uh, as Daryl is pointing to, uh, in case that is necessary for whatever emergency condition might arise. Um, and we don't show it here, but there will be some proposed drainage to accommodate the building uh, in the open area of parking in, in the rear there. Uh, but as Tom, as Attorney Gibbons alluded to, the restrictive areas of the site are the wetlands uh, in the northeast corner, and their associated buffer zones, as well as a floodplain line, which Daryl is following right now with his cursor. That's the floodplain line. So we are trying to avoid and, and or minimize any uh, impacts and development in those areas. Uh, just to be respectful of, of what we know will be the Conservation Commission's concerns, as well as when you get into floodplain, there's some compensatory storage issues that you have to, that you have to accommodate for. So we were really kind of restricted and, and to our envelope, as you see it here, uh, which we tried to maximize to get, uh, uh, you know, the development we wanted to, to provide for this, for this site. Um, and I should also note, we, we, uh, you know, working with, with Bergmeyer, there, there was a, a intentional intentionality to, to set the building back slightly more than the required setback just to accommodate a, a streetscape, and Daryl's going to get into that more in his presentation, but uh, just to accommodate sort of this Main Street uh, presentation that we, that we understand Air is looking for. Uh, so there was some, again, working with the town and some staff to uh, try to accommodate their wishes and, and what the, the master plan was for this area.
Drew, can I just add a couple of quick points there?
Sure.
So, uh, just to clarify that all of the parking is at grade. The parking that's shaded in gray illustrates where the second floor of the building hangs over the parking. So I just wanted to clarify that there is no underground parking. It is all at grade. And then the, the second point I wanted just to make is that the turning radius for emergency vehicles and fire trucks was reviewed by the Air Fire Department, and they were able to advise us on the, the requirements there. So they have reviewed this and, and they have given us the thumbs up that this works for their fire trucks.
Absolutely. Thanks, Kian. Uh, if, if there's questions, I don't know if you want to save them to the end, but we could just move on to Daryl if you'd like to have him present architectural portion.
Okay, seeing that there's no questions, I'll pick it up. So as Drew was mentioning, we felt it was important to, um, push the building back a little bit uh, beyond the setback. The setback at the front property is 10 feet by requirement. We pushed it back to 15 in an effort to really, um, you know, kind of follow and respect some of the goals of the master plan where they're trying to really encourage, um, retail on the ground floor and, and encourage, uh, public and access and public gathering. So by, excuse me, by expanding that sidewalk width and then, and, and, and company, accompanying the new sidewalk rework that's already underway along West Main Street, we get a great presence, and you'll, you'll see that in the next uh, image on the rendering. You get a great presence to keep, to really promote retail activity both in and out of the building, and to even encourage a little bit more, um, interaction with the building. Our actual residential entrance actually um, comes into an interior plaza. It's a covered plaza, so, you know, for, if we have retail that allows for outdoor seating, it's can be covered from the weather, but, um, you have access for the residential lobby space, which is in this back corner. This is back amenity space. We have two residential entrances off the street. Um, this actually, this plaza actually, um, accesses a stairs that, um, goes to the second floor, which is uh, a courtyard level for the residents, a private courtyard for the residences um, that, uh, really promote a lot of movement and activity from the residences, resident, um, you know, occupants to, uh, move about from the public, um, sidewalk activity. Um, the other, just go back one more point on the, um, fire access. Um, we do, but through our discussions with, um, the fire department and the police department, we also located two emergency parking spaces in the back, um, so they won't have to worry about, uh, you know, finding a space amongst the uh, parking or, um, you know, on the street, but there's also six available on-street parking spaces that we hope to work with the DPW to really, uh, shape. Um, we could have a possible seven spaces on the front, but we have the opportunity to work with DPW to work on the development of that. But looking at the, um, the exterior renderings and, and some of the architectural approach to this, um, you know, we did, we do realize that, you know, um, obviously, because we're asking for a variance for four stories, we looked at the Main Street, um, context. Uh, and we know that there's, um, you know, several buildings that are, uh, you know, three and four story. Um, our four-story building is actually, um, roughly the same height as a three-story building, your main block of, uh, you know, 3745 Main Street, which is your, you know, long block building, your brick building, and there's a four-story right next to it, 49, um, Main Street, which is actually a four-story building. So kind of looking at those as contextual, um, uh, models to, uh, respect, we, we look to try to articulate the massing of the building um, by, you know, obviously creating a strong base, bringing in materials that you see on Main Street already. You have a lot of brick, uh, buildings on Main Street. You have cladboard siding, and you have, you know, typically an articulation of the top level, whether it's the third floor or the fourth floor, it's usually a mansard-type roofing, so we, or articulation. So we try to. So we try to articulate that top floor to respect what's going on Main Street. And that's, you know, it's a common move in the architectural profession to kind of also help bring the scale of the building down. So it appears as a, a top level kind of roofing, um, uh, articulation. The other thing that we're trying to do is, you know, pay respect to the history of air. Um, we are bringing in some ste- steel detailing and reference to your railroad history. So there's some articulation that goes on with the balconies, the steel, uh, canopy eyebrows and some, um, upper level balconies. So we're trying to, you know, respect what your history is and, and we will develop the, the elevations along those lines. Um, but, uh, you know, as I mentioned, as you can see now in this rendering, the, the community's activity along the sidewalk because of that extra five feet becomes really enhanced and, and, um, we anticipate, whoops, I'm sorry. We anticipate the retail spaces, um, to be able to use that, bring out some furniture in relation to, you know, uh, seating and umbrellas to really promote some activity along that, um, not only for the residents, but for the town as well to appreciate. Um, you know, uh, some, some public opportunities, some commercial spaces. Um, I, I think I just want to make sure that we understood, I think, uh, Attorney Gibbons mentioned that we have twenty-five affordable units in this, uh, of the hundred and seventy units. So we are conscious of, um, your goals as a town to improve your affordable units. Um, so that's on our radar as well. Um, so I think, I think that basically covers the parameters um, of the architecture. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer anything.
Darrell, just one other point, which you may have made and I may have missed, and apologies if that's the case, but I think you did a really great job of, of breaking up the facade by using a different mix of styles and materials. And the reason you did that is to try and create this downtown village aesthetic so that the building doesn't read as one large monolithic structure, which is obviously not the goal of the Town of Air. You want to create a village streetscape, and I think Darrell, Darrell did a really great job of doing that here.
Thanks for picking that up, Tom, or Keen. And that does speak to the, we understand what your part of the Form-Based Code is on your lot with is trying to avoid that long monolithic kind of building that actually is, is actually a, a, a very important part of your Main Street, but the thirty-seven, thirty-four-five Main Street, that building is long and pretty, uh, consistent. And I think your Form-Based Code is kind of written around that to kind of avoid the kind of constant monolithic building. So we were conscious about trying to break that up, try to create activity and try to use materials that respects what's on Main Street, but trying to break down the mass to really promote kind of a scale relationship to, uh, to break down as much as possible.
Thank you.
I actually had one question on that, which I know this is outside of our, the three variances we're considering. But, um, what guarantees would the town have that that broken up facade would continue through the project?
Jess, Jess, we don't, we can't do that.
Can't do that. Okay.
That's, no, I made it quite plain at the beginning. We're going to stay within our parameters. I understand what you're asking.
Yeah.
But that's a planning board question.
Okay, thanks.
Are, are you, are we all set with presentations?
Yes, we're happy to answer any questions.
I guess my first question is, if you go back to the, uh, plot plan, please, the, uh, air. Now, what am I looking at here on, on lot lines? Which one is which? That's sitting on which you, you mentioned, Attorney Gibbons, you mentioned earlier that it was two oh one dash two oh five. So, all right. Why does all of your applications delineate two oh one?
Well, I, you know, it's, it's one in, in combined parcel. I mean, uh, my, my building here at Park Street is, uh, you know, like twenty-one to twenty-five or something and, and, you know, it's, it's just the way it was back prior to two thousand thirteen, they were separate lots. It was two oh one, two oh five. Since two thousand thirteen, you know, the current owner got both parcels and has been using it as, as one continuous independent parcel. And I think he's here tonight, you know, he could speak to that, but, but the entire parcel is two oh one to two oh five.
Is that what this red line is supposed to display?
Yeah, based, you know, that's a, that's an approximation. It's, it's the two oh one, or two oh one is on the right side and two, two, three to two oh five is on the left side of that red line. So that's approximate location of the division.
And the, the address is current.
Ran into this once before. We had to, we, didn't we have to, we were talking about combining lots for one piece of property. I, refresh my memory. You remember that, Mike? Which one was that?
How recently, Sam? Was it within the last couple of years or was it longer than that?
Because I know we, we did, we, we did this once before, but we had to, uh,
So I know that we
Somebody had to combine lots.
That was, that was on Sandy Pond Road where they had thirty-five A and thirty-five B. They had two different lots. And they combined that.
And did they have to do that through the registry of deeds or?
So
Just because somebody's got, that owns both lots, doesn't mean that both lots.
Well, this is what, this is how I look at this, right? If you have contiguous parcels like these, I think for the purposes of tonight's discussion, and I could be wrong, so feel free to correct me, but I think to, to delete a lot line is much more simple than separating them, right? So they would go through the A and R process with the planning board, I think, and that would delete it. Now, I have no idea sort of how this has worked out since, since the owner bought the property. Um, you know, he's been using it as two oh one West Main since two thousand thirteen. But generally, like an A and R is filed at the registry. You know, that may not have been done, but I, it's a pretty simple process and it's
Well, when the, when the attorney tells me, okay, two oh one to two oh five, but I see everything listed as two oh one, I begin to question that.
Chairman, if I may.
Please.
So, so oftentimes we're, we're making the argument that parcels didn't merge. Um, I've probably been before you on cases like that.
Yep.
It, the, the, the street address, I think, is immaterial from the legal description of the parcel. And so our project is on these two parcels there, you know, from the assessor's perspective, it's parcel thirty-two dash fifteen and parcel thirty-two dash fourteen. Uh, as I say, my building had an address of twenty-one to twenty-five, I think, and I, and I go by, you know, twenty-one Park Street. So I, I think that the address is immaterial. The parcel that we're talking about is what's shown on the site plan.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, troops, what do we think about going to four stories? Now, bear in mind, we've got a brand new law, well, brand new three years ago. It was voted unanimously at town meeting to adopt Form-Based Code and put these restrictions in place for that area. So let's hear what you think. Mike?
So, you know, I've gone through the packet. I've looked over the comments from the, the different town departments and, and department heads, and I think a few of them are on tonight. In, in terms of the building height, you know, you could almost argue that this is now, you know, I don't want you to take this out of context, but you could almost argue that this is a three-story building. The majority of the building is the residential units and they're, of, those are the units that are, you know, above grade. The majority of the bottom floor is parking. Um, you know, and I know the parking, the parking spots are a separate issue uh, that will take up in a separate vote. Uh, I, I'm not as concerned with the building height. Um, you know, one of the things that uh, of the, the board comments, I know the building commissioner, you know, obviously voiced some concerns.
Well, I, we, we, looking at the, the information that they gave us, the, and I, and I, I agree with you to a point, but the, the responses that we got had absolutely nothing to do with what we're looking at. Yeah, they were all off in a completely different direction and they had no, no bearing whatsoever on this hearing tonight.
I, I agree, but generally I, I, I take, uh, Charlie's, you know, Charlie's opinion to heart on a lot of these applications.
Yeah.
Um, you know, he's also been a long-term air guy, right? So he noted in, in his letter that he was at the town meeting where this was voted on. Um, but I tend to frankly lean towards, um, Mark's comments, I think, with this project. Um, I, I do have concerns about one of the applications, but i- it wasn't this one. Um, I think this being the first project, I do think we have to, you know, go carefully here. And I know that they'll be in front of the planning board, and if I had to guess, and, and I think Jess can speak to it when she goes, probably the Conservation Commission as well. Um, but I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good. And I was on this board when we approved the last, I'll call it, commercial development uh, on West Main Street, and it was one of Mr. Moore's storage units. I was in favor of it at the time and I still am. But one of the things we talked about at that meeting was that, you know, this really is a gateway to air, right? And currently, the gateway to air is a number of storage units, which I was in favor of. The strip mall across the street and this, and I think to have a viable project, especially one that, i- if I'm reading it right, was courted by the town at one point. You know, I, I, I hate to do it on the first one, but I do think some concessions are needed and I, I'm not opposed to this one.
Thank you.
That's my thoughts on it.
Jess?
Um, I'm pretty much on the same page as Mike. And I don't have, uh, I mean, I, for, for, for all the reasons that Mike just gave, so I could repeat them all, but basically he said a lot of what I would say.
Okay, thanks. John?
Well, I, I was kind of going by looking through the package and I, and I kind of got the impression that it really wasn't supported to go to four stories on the first uh, first development in the news, uh, a new area. And you know, it was, it was voted on to be three stories and right out of the gate, they're going to say, well, we're going to make it, we're going to make it out of, out of, out of code in every direction we possibly can. And I'm really, I'm really not excited to see four stories go there. I don't think it's gonna match up to anything else in the area at all.
Okay. Thank you. Ron?
I'm, uh, I'm opposed to the four-story as well. Um, I'm listening to John's and, um, um, we've got a, I think our first obligation is to uphold the zoning bylaws as much as possible and any variation should be seriously, um, questioned. And, uh, so I'm against this four-story concept. It's a beautiful building that, and the architect, I say that's, that's, they did a wonderful job out there, but if you, you know, to squeeze us and, uh, no, I'm against the four-story without going any further.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnson, you have your hand up?
Yes, I have. Uh, I'm actually the abutter. I'm one ninety-nine and one ninety-three West Main Street. And I've been there since two thousand and three, I want to say. And I'm absolutely, uh, I, I agreed, I wasn't thrilled about the original changes uh, that they were making to the zoning down there because they certainly didn't ask me about it. Um, I have two hundred and ten feet of frontage and I was commercially zoned with two single-family houses, which I provide affordable housing. I have local people that rent from me that, uh, own businesses here in town for a very long time. And by building this up to four stories, you're going to overshadow the whole road. You're going to cut the sunlight down. You know, you're, you're packing way too much on one piece of property and, you know, they give the sales pitch, you know, oh, we got twenty-five percent of affordable housing. You know, well, twenty-five units out of a hundred and seventy? Um, that's just, and you want to, the other variance he's looking for is to get rid of the parking. I don't know about you, but
Well, hold on. One at a time. That's the way we agreed on it. I understand your enthusiasm, but we'll, we'll get to them one at a time. Okay?
Okay. Well, then when we go back to the lot, when you, when, uh, uh, Attorney Given says that it's used for one parcel, uh, one, the parcel is used as one, but that's actually not true. Because the house in the building that he built on is on one parcel and the parking is on another where he parked eighteen-wheelers. So that's really not true. It's two separate lots that he's asking for a variance as one lot. He has to merge those first and then ask for the variance. Um, but as we're going to four stories, uh, you know, there is not many buildings in this town that have four stories, not even in downtown. Uh, when I went around town looking, I could only find the new hotels on, uh, Devon. And, uh, I didn't like the look of that. Um, you know, a lot of planning was put in to come up with three stories. And just because someone wants to build on it where, you know, the town shouldn't fold before. Because if this contractor doesn't want to do it, somebody else will. And bringing it down to three stories, which the original plan will still bring housing, will still bring business, will still bring all of it. Uh, because you won't have to cut the parking down, you know, they can still give twenty-five affordable units in there. So anyway, I, I'll wait for the next. I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak. Uh, if you look right on the plan, you can see my small house with that thing towering over me. Um, anyway, thank you.
All right. Beth Sudomire, I see you had your hand up. Are you in a butter?
I'm not in a butter. I'm sorry. It was unclear if you were taking public comment, but whenever public and non-abutter comment is available, I would like to offer some comments.
Well, there really aren't public comments. We take a butter comments. Is there, do you have a question? Not a comment, a question.
I guess part of my question would be related to sufficient demonstration of hardship. I feel like the information that has been presented is insufficient to truly understand whether a determination of hardship could be met. I think that there's some contradictory information that's been presented in the packet related to the due diligence that the town should be doing to undertake and understand the financial implications of the project and that there is, I have no confidence in a demonstration of hardship having been demonstrated through this. I think that the lot is, is very, very built out and I do have some concerns regarding emergency access seeing that there is no, um, way for emergency vehicles to access the building without going basically underneath the building.
That's fine.
So I would like to hear more about that as that is a significant piece of consideration for the town in doing its due diligence and truly understanding whether new equipment, new methods and approaches would be needed to be undertaken in order to be able to successfully battle a fire at this location, for example. We do not have structures like this where you cannot access. Um, you know,
You're, 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 you're going way off track.
I, I also feel that the stories and then is, is obviously significantly associated with the number of units and the number of units associated with the number of parking spaces that would be needed.
Stop, please. Stop.
Yep.
All right. We're not even talking about that. I, I laid the rules out at the beginning. So if you have a question, ask. If not, thank you. I'll move on to the next.
Okay. So if someone could speak to the due diligence that the town would need.
That is our prerogative right now. We determine if there's adequate cause for the vari- the variances. We determine that. That's part of this board's job.
Right. And so can the board discuss that, I guess?
I don't think I understand your question, but I'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Stanley.
Mister?
Gibbons.
Um, no.
Tom Givens, I'm wondering if I could respond to a couple of the issues that have come up thus far.
We got a couple more people that got their hands up. Let me-
I'll I'll wait till the end.
Thank you. Mister Los- Yaswega, was, I'm sorry, how do I say that?
Squalia, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Squalia.
You have a question?
Uh, no, I don't have, I along with my business partners' property.
Oh, okay, all right. You own this property?
Yes, yes, sir.
Excellent, okay.
Two speakers ago, I think the guy's name was Todd.
Yeah.
Uh, indicated that we use it as two different properties. That is so untrue, it's false. We use it as one property. It is two lots. We use it as one. I consider it one property, and so does my business partner, I'm quite sure.
What does the state say about it?
I don't care what the state says about it. We bought both.
Okay.
No disrespect, understand?
Hmm.
We pay the town handsomely tax-wise. We use it for what we use it for, and we consider it one one parcel.
All right. Thank you.
That's-
Thank you for clearing that up.
You're very welcome.
Pauline, I see you have your hand up. Do you have a question?
A comment, question and a comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for taking me. Question first. And I'm glad that I am able to follow Mrs. Seguela, because I I'm wondering where the letter from S and J West Main Street Realty Trust is in this packet. I looked at your application, or the applicant's application a couple days ago. I have a copy here, and the application for a hearing requires that if you are a tenant, licensee, or prospective buyer, please include a letter from the property owner acknowledging the application with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And it lists below that very comment, the name and address of the holder of legal title to the land. Mrs. Seguela just commented that he, or at least his company, S and J West Main Realty Trust is the owner. And I saw nothing from them in the packet of materials. So that's my comment. Or question? Question, sorry. My comment, I would like to reserve until you get to the deliberation part about whether or not you continue this public hearing or make decisions tonight.
It'll be tonight.
Your decisions tonight?
Yep.
All right, well, then, Sam, I will share with you. Um, I totally support this. I have read the um, support email from Mr. Gleason. And I I urge you to incorporate that in the meeting tonight, in the record of the meeting.
No, I, you know, let me, let me explain something to you, Pauline. I I read that, and I read Charlie's. And in reality, those letters have no place here. You know that. They are not germane to this conversation. They're not, they they coincide with the property use, or how it's gonna be used, or what's gonna be used for. But it 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 really doesn't have any bearing on whether it's a four story building or three. You know that.
Well, Sam, Sam, I would disagree as a former member of the ZBA for a number of years. I think everybody's input is germane to the decision that the ZBA makes. I wholly support the the applicant's project. I don't know that three versus four stories is a huge issue. I realize that the abutter feels it is, because there's nothing there um, now for four stories or three stories, or even two stories. There's nothing there on that side of West Main Street. And I would encourage the ZBA to work with the developer and the applicant to find a way to make this work for the town of Air. If it's a four story com- commercial building, retail on the first floor, commercial rental office space on the second floor, and residential on floors three and four. That is exactly what Mr. Manoyan explained to me two years ago would happen down there. So, and he's not here tonight, unfortunately. And he's against this whole project. You have the ability to make the future of Air and West Main Street. Continue the hearing. Allow other comments.
Yep.
Be open. Thank you.
Mister Diskin, you're next.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I I wanted to go back to the-
You have a question?
On the, I have a question on the height.
Okay.
The height's been demonstrated by the architect and by the applicant at around forty-nine feet. And similar to heights of buildings downtown. So my question to the applicant is, I'm concerned that the height of the building may or may not contain rooftop equipment that would be, then make the building appear to be taller. So are you able to design the building with no rooftop equipment so that you can stick to that forty-nine feet? Or we have to see rooftop equipment on the building, which would then need a sh- a uh, enclosure so it's to uh, cover the the site of the rooftop building and rooftop equipment, and therefore make the building in fact appear to be taller than the forty-nine feet. Downtown, those buildings are old, they have nothing up on the roofs, just a couple of vents here and there. But if this building were in fact today, typically it'd need rooftop equipment, I believe, to do it. Maybe an elevator shaft as well, and things like that, that would protrude to the top of the building. So I'm concerned, can anyone answer the fact that it will in fact stay at forty-nine feet and not be taller than that?
Thank you. Mister Givens, can you get one of those people to respond? Yes, I think Drew, is that something you can answer, or or Daryl?
I'd like to hear Daryl speak to that. Yeah, yeah, I'll take that. Um, certainly, the elevator uh, is required to have an overrun, and it will project um, over the the current roof line. Uh, both, yeah, as you can see in the the plan, you still see the plan, right?
No.
No, you don't? Oh, did I stop sharing?
We we can see the plan.
Okay. So let me just zoom in a little bit. The elevator shaft is set back. So from the street side, the overrun of the elevator is gonna be very difficult to see unless you're, unless you're a four story building on the other side of the street. Um, we are still going through the mechanical and design of the building. Um, is it likely there to be rooftop equipment? It it's likely, um, at the same, the same theory that it's not on the the face of the building, and it will be set back if, you know, most likely in line with a corridor. So there, the most likely choice of equipment are low condensers, so no more than three feet to four feet tall. Um, but they are set back for far enough away that you will not be able to see them from across the sidewalk uh, on the south side of West Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
That is your ca- question, Ken?
Thank you, yep.
Okay. Next up, Ms. Whibby?
I am Sarah with the, I live at eleven Groton Shirley Road.
Do you have a question?
Yes, um,
Your question is?
All right, does the town or the applicant have to qualify the water, the sewer, the wastewater?
Not here. Not here, huh? I'm sorry.
You don't have to qualify our resources here?
No, that goes to the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I don't see anybody else with their hands up. Um,
Chairman, I just wanted, I had my hand up, I wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Um, so there was a a question or concern raised about emergency vehicle access. I just wanna reiterate what we stated earlier in the presentation, and that this was reviewed by both the Fire Department and the Police Department. And both departments confirmed that they were satisfied with the emergency access. We are providing two different routes for fire truck access, and the attorney radiuses of those have have been, can have been addressed. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was that the, a letter from the property owner was submitted as part of the application. I'm not sure if maybe Samantha didn't circulate that to as part of the package, but uh, that was submitted, and and we have evidence of that.
I didn't see one, no.
I I do have a copy of it. Um, it just wasn't included in the meeting packet. Um, if you wanna see it, I can pull it up right now.
No.
But I I do have it, it was submitted. It was part of the the full package that was submitted.
Thank you, Samantha. All right. Dennis, Dennis who?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis Curran?
Yes, sir, question?
Yeah, my my question is, um, it was in 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 clar- and and clear this up for me if I'm incorrect. It it was my understanding that the the purpose of having different zoning districts is to have different zoning districts. That is to say, the comparisons being made are to a zoning district that is not this zoning district. And the fact that we have forty-eight to fifty-two, let's say, tall buildings in downtown, which is a different zoning district, does not mean you should then mimic it in a different zoning district with different height requirements. So it just seems to me that, it it just seems to me that the comparison uh, of different zoning districts and trying to make them seem, well, it's sort of similar, kind of, does not bode well for the town. And given that the form-based code was recently implemented, the first change ought not be of this, of this larger scale. And minor changes perhaps on a given project may be necessary, but an additional floor and far fewer parking spaces seems like a bridge too far to me.
Thank you. All right. Um, Michael, you wanna make a motion?
So-
Chairman, if you- Yes, sir, Mister Givens. Oh, I I I, please forgive me, I forgot you wanted to say something.
No problem. So just just taking a few comments that were were made tonight. So uh, I think Mister Johnson inferred that uh, there's only twenty-five affordable units. This, this is majority market rate um, units, but twenty-five unit or twenty-five units are gonna be affordable. Now, I think, looking at the uh, the master plan, the town has an interest in having all types of housing, you know, affordable units and market rate units. Now, you you just approved the plan down on Fitchburg Road that is gonna be entirely affordable, and that's a good thing for the town. But we also ought want to have uh, some a large number of market rates, again, for uh, you know, to for the diversity of housing. Market rates are also important uh, in, you know, supporting the businesses in town. So it it, you know, there isn't a requirement that there'd be more than twenty-five units, but I think twenty-five units is very generous. I think that's slightly under fifteen percent. So this would actually improve the town's, you know, goal to get to ten percent. It certainly doesn't take it away, it it actually improves it. So that was one thing I wanted to talk about. Um, the other thing is, you know, Mister Ellison, Mister DeFilippo are concerned about upholding the the form-based code, particularly the first development. And and I understand that. But I, what I think we have to focus on is that this form-based code was adopted in the same way as our our entire zoning bylaw was adopted. That's through town meeting. So you could make the argument that you shouldn't give any variances out, because it doesn't meet the bylaw, and therefore, the town has spoken. But the state, through its legislation, and creating the Zoning Board of Appeals, takes into consideration that there are certain things that, you know, couldn't have been thought of, or reasons that there should be a variance to the bylaw. And the form-based code even acknowledges that. And even if it didn't specifically, I mean, clearly, section, uh, forty-eight, section ten is what controls. But in the form-based code,
The form-based code supersedes the rest of the, the rest of the uh, z- zoning board, zoning uh, rules.
Well, well, it doesn't supersede the forty-eight, section ten.
Yeah.
Um, it it which which is the state provision that allows the Zoning Board of Appeals to grant variances. However, in the form-based code, there with me just a minute while I find it. Um, so on page one fifty-two of the bylaw, on the right side, about halfway through that paragraph, it says deviations from the building BDS, I think that stands for building standards, can be approved only through special permit process provided by the Town of Air zoning bylaw. So it acknowledges that there may be situations where deviations make sense. Now, it has to make sense based on the requirements of forty-eight, section ten, which I know this board is very familiar with. And that has to do with lot shape, soil condition, or topography. And what I presented is that this lot has issues with lot shape and soil conditions. It's the, the lot shape is what it is. We have two hundred and fifty-four feet of an existing parcel. Uh, and the soil conditions are the wetlands and the uh, flood plain, which, you know, impact the ability to construct on this lot. Now, someone else had mentioned that we haven't really explained hardship. And and I'd like to go over that again, just to be clear, that that I feel that we have presented hardship and that we need it. So what I'm saying is that because of our lot shape and soil conditions, this really can't be developed strictly adhering to the form-based code. And so the reason we need the variance is specifically because of those conditions. Now, the ten A, chapter forty-eight, section ten also requires that that it specifically affect our lot and not the district generally. And what I presented is that, you know, these lots were developed in this whole part of town. We're an old town. Uh, you know, this is not some forty-acre lot, and we cut off a piece and are asking for a variance. I mean, this this part of West Main Street's been developed for well over a hundred years. Uh, and the idea of the form-based code is to rehabilitate West Main and and create uh, you know, the the neighborhood, the the appearance that I described in my presentation. And the only way I think that this is gonna happen on this lot is with the variance. And I think this will spark revitalization of this area. Uh, so I do believe that we have shown hardship. I do believe that we have provided um, presentation that meets all the requirements of ten A. And I think it's so important, very important, that this variance is no different than any other variance request. So whether the bylaw is three years old or original from nineteen seventy, seventy-two, when the town adopted bylaws, it it's no different than someone coming in, asking for dimensional relief or some other relief. A variance is a variance. We have to show that we met the requirements of forty-eight, section ten, which I respectfully believe that we have. And, you know, I I missed it, I remember being at the meeting, I think I was at both meetings, when the storage facilities were approved. And I believe that my recollection is right, that both of those required a use variance. So there was a variance, and I remember Mister DeFilippo expressing his concern that uh, is that what we want West Main Street to be? Is that the appearance you want coming into the gateway? And and I have no problem with those developments. But I think here's an opportunity where we can spark a revitalization of that area. And I think, you know, four stories, Mister Johnson said, well, it'll overshadow his his single family home. But I think what we have to compare it to is what Mister Johnson can do on his land. And that is that if if the form-based code is fully implemented, we're gonna have that whole street redeveloped, revitalized. And his would likely be a two or three story building. So it's not overshadowing a single family, it's the potential uh, to create a a great area down there.
My only heartburn with the whole thing, to be quite candid with you, is this form-based code was unanimously passed at the town meeting. Hundred and thirty-four people unanimously voted for this. They said, we want three-story buildings in this area. They wanted the form-based code, they voted it in, again, unanimously. So that being said, how do you turn around, say, okay, hundred and thirty-four people asked for this, and we're gonna ignore it?
Well, because I I don't think it's a matter of ignoring it. I think it's a matter of of the ZBA, you know, acting within their authority as described in forty-eight, section ten. But what I would say is, you know, most most zoning bylaws pass, doesn't create a whole lot of hardship at, or a lot of heartburn at town meeting. And we can absolutely say that every bylaw, in our book, was approved at least by the uh, the requirement to vote, uh, you know, for a zoning change. So you could make the same argument that anybody that comes before you for a variance on lot size, you know, no, you can't do that, because the town has spoken, and the lot has to be twelve thousand square feet. Uh, so this is the exact same thing. And I, you know, and if if you do say that, hey, people voted for this, then they also voted for the language that's in there that talks about deviations, that there are certain circumstances that there would be deviations. And if we want, you know, I've been in town since nineteen ninety-six, and it, there hasn't been much development on West Main Street. There's the vet, uh, there's the storage facilities, and there's the current owner who rehabbed, you know, this this, the building that's on there to be his office. I don't think that's what the people that voted for form-based code envisioned. I think they envisioned much more development down there. Now, gr- much more development down there. Now, granted, it says three, you know, three stories, but but again, that's what a variance is all about, and that's what this board's authority is.
Chairman, may if I may just add to to Attorney Gibbons' point. The form-based code, those efforts began by the town in twenty seventeen, and they were formally adopted in twenty nineteen. There was two years for people to prepare for that adoption and to prepare applications. Once that form-based code was adopted, there was no flood of applications. Nobody stepped forward and said, I want to be the first one to take advantage of this opportunity. And the reason for that is because the form-based code does not allow or accommodate for development. It simply doesn't go far enough. And we are the only ones who are stepping forward and willing to take a chance on this.
Thank you. Pauline, I know you've had your hand up for a bit. Do you have a question?
No, Mr. Chair. Well, actually, I have a question and a comment. You did not give me the opportunity. I did not ask the question before. The um, owner of the property is supposed to have submitted a letter um, with respect to the various variances. That is not in the meeting packet. Maybe I missed it. But I'll leave that out there, and I don't want to uh, subterfuge the application. But I do want to share some comments. The Town of Air planner, Mark Archibald, who I don't believe is on this call, is wholly support of this project. He is?
He yeah, he was.
All right, I'm sorry.
I read his letter, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm glad I'm glad he's here. I'm sorry he hasn't commented because he wholly supports this based on his February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three memo to your board, as does as does another resident, Dan Gleason, in an email, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And I guess I'm the third resident or second resident who supports the project. As Mr. Gibbons said, Attorney Gibbons said, I need to make that distinction. The 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 importance of the zoning board of appeals is to do exactly what the applicant is requesting. Grant variances and or special permits. Whether the zoning bylaws were approved unanimously by town town meeting, as my good friend Charlie Schultz wrote in his memo. Yeah. The residents don't know what they're approving. We all who have served in these positions know that. And that's not a slight on them. Really, most of them just want to go home. But it's your responsibility as ZBA members to allow these developments to happen. Tom Gibbons knows of which he speaks. He would never do anything to the detriment of this town. And I encourage you to either continue this hearing and take more comments or approve these variances, all three of them. And I'm only talking about the first one. Because that is your duty to the residents of the Town of Air.
Our duty to the residents is to protect the interest of the town.
Agreed. And where are you not protecting the interest of the town?
I'm not debating with you. Thank you for your comment.
But maybe not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? May I just have a few other comments? So so looking at all the, and I and I know that the board takes into consideration the department head's comments, the other board comments, and that's important. And if Mark is on the line, I would hope that he would speak up and and further go into his comments, but he fully supports all three variances. And he talks about the fact that, you know, this is the the development isn't happening down there because it can't happen, practically speaking, based on, you know, what other developers have done. Um, the DPW had no concerns. The police department had no.
We all, we read these.
Well, no, I know, but it's important that that I bring this out because, you know, I'm I'm hoping that I can um can answer the concerns of Mr. De Filippo and Mr. Ellis and and bring them around to support it. And what I'm saying is that the police department had no concerns other than uh, preventing creative parking, which we're going to make sure that there isn't creative parking going on down there. Uh, and then admittedly, that's a site plan issue.
Uh, you're right. That's exactly right.
Right, right. The fire department's only comment was complying that we comply with five twenty-seven CMR eighteen, which we certainly will. The town manager deferred to the ZBA. The Board of Health raises good questions, all of which rarely relate to site plan, but they had no no opposition to the variance request. The Conservation Commission had no concerns other than to mention that it it likely will need conservation approval, which we acknowledge and will be before them. The treasurer, tax collector, the town clerk, the assessor, they all had no comments. So I I don't see, other than Mr. Schultz's um response, I don't see any opposition. And I think that, you know, I know you don't want to go into his issues, but um, but I do believe.
I'm not going to, no.
No, I agree. But but I think that it's important that the board realized that their obligation is to protect the town. It's also to either grant a variance or deny a variance based on the criteria in forty-eight, section ten that I've gone through, and I believe that that we've met those. But what I would ask is any board member that that isn't convinced yet, ask me specifically about those requirements in ten. And 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 hopefully I can convince you. But I, you know, we've talked about what the condition is, the lot shape, the soil condition. We've talked about how this affects this lot, not the zoning district generally. We've talked about the hardship that is not personal to the applicant, but to anybody that wants to develop that land. And that's the important thing. It's not a personal hardship. It's not a hardship based that that only the current owner experiences or that some applicant would experience. It's generally, it's it's the hardship that's related to this land. And we're saying that this land cannot be developed in strict compliance with the form-based code as a practical matter and a financial matter. And we all know that if if it can't be done financially, it's never going to get developed. Uh, and that relief can be granted without detriment to the public good. I think that this is, you know, going to enhance that area. It's going to spark the redevelopment of that area. And that it doesn't derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. We talked about what what the purpose and intent of the form-based code is to create this this diverse housing and mixed-use development in a in a great street as as defined by, you know, um, designer um, so I I just hope that if if any of the board members have any additional questions and that they they haven't been convinced, that you give me the opportunity to answer your questions and hopefully convince you.
Thank you. Sam, you've been patient.
Yes, I have. Just a couple of things.
Question?
Well, yes, this is two separate lots that they're using as one. And one of them is owned a T-three and one's is owned T-five. So which are they picking for the lot? Are they doing it by a T-three or a T-five?
T-five.
They are, so they're using the T-three as a T-five because they say it's one lot. And when they express the hardship of the lot, well, which one is it? Because by the plan you have there, you know, the the right-sided lot has problems compared to the left-sided lot. And the addition of the uh, the structure that's on there, the house that's on there was rebuilt is on one lot. And then the other lot was vacant. So, I mean, their taxes is two lots, their deed is two lots. And we're giving, they were a request of variance for one lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just on that issue?
Yes, sir.
So our bylaw talks about when a lot is is bisected by two districts. And it allows for the less restrictive district to go in fifty feet. And and I'm sure the board's aware of that provision in our bylaw. But that doesn't help us in this situation, and that's why we're asking for a variance on on the lot width.
Mr. J and S? You're up. Your hand's up?
Sam, I think his hand's just been up. But before we jump to another public comment, could we actually hear from Mark? Because he has his hand raised, and I think any comments that that he might have, I I think could be very important to hear.
Mr. Archibald?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I do support the granting of all three variances for this project. I just wanted to get that comment aside. But I wanted to also speak to the process of developing zoning amendments. Um, it's more of an art than a science. And I do recall when Alan was working on the West Main Street Form-Based Code District that I'll, there was a lot of thought and there was a lot of discussion about where to make the uh, the line between the T-five Village Core and the T-five-one Village Street. And it it was something that, without having any big uh, applications, I should say, before us, it was really, you know, hard to know exactly where to draw that line. Uh, but form-based codes are relatively new in Massachusetts, and this, I believe, is one of the first ones adopted in Massachusetts. And I think that the board should con- consider that when, you know, this was written and prepared, we were going, you know, you know, on our best analysis. But that the distinction, I believe, as a planner, between the T-five and the T-five-one and the three and the four stories, to me is is somewhat minor and perhaps in the future can be worked out in a zoning amendment. But I know you have to go by what the zoning says now, of course. Uh, but, you know, given what I've said about, you know, we've seen with the the general two thousand eighteen zoning bylaw, uh, you know, when you get an application and you see, oh, we didn't think of that, or here's a section that we have to amend to make this sort of thing work. And I think this is a case in point. Uh, that, you know, unfortunately, it's split by the uh, the village district lines. And uh, you know, that's unfortunate, but I think the best interest of the town would be served by granting this with the understanding that the zoning could be amended in the future.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, um. I see your hand up, Bessudamire. If you have a question, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I would really just like to point out that this seems to be handled inconsistently because I feel like some public members have been able to express more of a comment than a question. I respect.
I've been trying to stop him, but apparently I'm not doing a very good job.
Would you allow me to make a very brief and general statement?
Make a brief and general statement.
Thank you. I certainly support the form-based code as adopted unanimously at town meeting. I think a project like this would greatly enhance the corridor and entrance to air. But I think that the board needs to significantly consider the requirements of a variance, whether or not there's sufficient demonstration of hardship and sufficient demonstration of the project as proposed not being detrimental to the town, which is another consideration I don't think has been touched upon significantly. I think that the financial implications as presented have not been thoroughly studied and vetted. And I've seen in other towns much, much more substantial financial evaluations conducted when such considerations are being made. So if you are actually going to entertain passing this, I would certainly request it be continued and and studied and explored in much, much more detail. I think that they've done a beautiful job with the presentation of the architecture for the building. I think that there is tremendous potential here, but I really do not support the granting of a variance right off the bat as we're using our form-based code in West Main Street for the first time. I think that this would most appropriately go back to town meeting for consideration. And I really do hope that a project like this could be successful. I just don't think this is the avenue for which it should be proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, I see you have your hand up again. Make a brief question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, am I am I correct in saying that the owner owned the property prior to the form-based code being adopted? When was it? In twenty nineteen?
As I'm, as I uh, I think that's a correct statement.
That is, Mr. Chairman.
The S and J owned it before the form-based code came in, as I understand it.
So so they had the opportunity, if as Mr. Gibbons contends, that the property is undevelopable unless they're grant, I I mean, pretty much that that whole side of the street, I guess he's implying, that no development can take place based on that based on the form-based code, then the time to have voiced those concerns would have been when the town moved to adopt that form-based code, and there was a lengthy process involved in that. Um, and to Mr. Archibald's point, um, yes, the zoning may need to be amended to properly accommodate other sorts of development. But we ought not to start with the first development being the granting of variances, which, you know, I think it's fair to say are substantial in nature. And while I understand that maybe some variances need to be granted on the margins in order to make a property, in order to make a development work, these wholesale changes to the intent of the form-based code does not seem warranted at the first go. And if we need to go back to the town and amend the zoning to accommodate developments of this size, then, you know, I I think that that's something that could be done in the future.
Dennis, what's your last name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Curran, C-U-R-R-A-N.
Thank you. All right. Marilyn, I see you had your hand up. Are you ready to resign?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Um, my first question is, they obviously gave a lot of thought to the design of the facade of the building, but um, no mention was made of how that's been carried out to the other sides of the building, and I was just wondering if they could speak to that.
No, that's all, that's all part of the planning board site plan review.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering what it looked like, but if maybe that's not our plan, so.
It's it's an informational question. I mean, it has, it has no bearing on what we're discussing.
Okay.
If you have, what's your other question?
My other question is, part of the form-based code for the village says that we're supposed to, um, it wants to encourage um, gathering points and social um areas. And they mentioned that they've incorporated a bricked-over plaza as a place for gatherings. And I see that on the side, there is the auxiliary fire lane is grass with brick pavers, but I'm wondering if they could speak to other landscaping and gathering points that they have in the plans.
Again, that's that's all part of site plan review.
Okay.
All right. I I hate to cut you short, but that's.
Okay. I know we're short for time.
Well, no, I'm not really running the clock. Uh, I'm not, um, we don't get paid by the hour. It's it's just a um, it's, be quite candid, it's none of our business.
Okay.
That the planning board, they're going to take this to the planning board.
Okay.
Planning board will go over this tree by tree, door by door, where we we don't. We're here. Our purpose is to review applications for variances to the zoning board, zoning rules, uh, the if we deem them necessary, we grant them. If we don't, we don't.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. That's fine. That's your first time out of the out of the box. I get that. It's all right. Michael, back to you, buddy. I don't think, nobody else got their hand. I don't know why the people have their hands up. Please take your hand down if you're not. J and S, if your hand's up.
See it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, you spin up, you and you've never taken it down.
I did take it down. I put it back up when I was told that, um, yeah, there you go, the the middle finger. So.
Wrong hand.
You talk about not, people are, people talking about not allowing four stories, this, that, and the other thing. When the Town of Air came to us, and they did come to us, and they were looking for a grant to do all this road work out here. They asked us for some proprietary information. We we we've supplied it because your first grant was turned down.
I don't know anything about any of this. All right.
We supplied it, and your grant was approved for three point two million dollars. We were also instructed that when a um a proposal comes before the town, if we wanted to um suggest or or provide a four-story building, to do it. Do it. Four stories. It'll be okay. It'll be okay. That was Alan. Alan, right there. There he is. He said, oh, four stories, it won't be an issue. Now it's an issue. He says no. The building inspector, Charlie, The building inspector Charlie cites us all this crap about too many, too many children, which there are. Don't even say it, Mike. There are.
What? I'm gonna cut you off because what you're describing is a, is a.
No, no.
The idea is.
Hold on, I own the property here.
That's great chance, could you put him on mute?
Let me also say, you wanna mute me, go ahead. Did you mute me?
Not yet, but.
Okay.
Uh, I won't have you describe something like that because that's not how this board operates.
Let's be fair and reasonable, sir, because what I believe.
Oh, stop, everybody, stop right now, stop it. All of you, that's it. I'm gonna cut this conversation right off. You're a resident, I'm a resident. End of discussion. We're not getting into a fight.
I think, I think.
We're not getting into who did this, who did that, you'd said this, you said.
Oh, don't mute me. I think the town's been great to work with. And my business partner and I have zero intention of leaving this town. We love doing business in this town. So far, the town and everybody has been great to work with.
That's it. Okay, thank you.
But.
I'm cutting them off. That's, we're done, we're done.
Okay, let me assure you, you cut me off. All of your efforts will be zero.
I don't know what you're talking about and I'm not getting into it.
This property will remain an, an absolute disaster if that's what you really want. No, I mean, no disrespect, but come on, really?
I don't know, I have no idea what you're talking about. I really do not.
You, you want all the properties, buildings, down both sides, it's beautiful. Right? But you're not allowing anything. Now all of a sudden, it's not the first project, was it gonna be the second project that is allowed a variance? Well, that's not fair.
How far, how far you wanna take this? You really wanna get into sarcasm? We really gonna go down this road?
No, no, I just wanna speak reasonably.
That's enough. Enough, we're done with this, okay? We're done.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Jeff, if you got a question, ask it, otherwise, not. You're mute.
Thank you. Given the um, back and forth you just had, I don't know a way of saying this question without sounding sarcastic and I don't want to sound sarcastic. So I need to put that on the table, Sam. Um, as many of you know, some don't, I was with the planning board through the development of the form-based code um, bylaws. The question I was gonna ask without, without remaining, and I don't wanna be sarcastic, I'm dead serious about this. The question would be, why didn't the planning board think of every possibility when they wrote the code? That's a rhetorical question.
That's right, it's rhetorical.
But I, but I, but in Sam, if I may have one comment and I will get out, okay? Um, zoning is, it lives with the community it's in. When you build zoning bylaws, you do what you've got in front of you, and it's very hard to predict the future. So I would hope that, I, I appreciate that the town of Air did vote through the zone, the uh, form-based code for both downtown and for the West Main Street. But I would also hope that you wouldn't as a, we wouldn't feel constricted by the absolute letter of the code that was voted on at this point now, four years ago. Because four years ago, we didn't know what the future held for this end of West Main Street, or for that matter, the other zoning bylaws we've changed throughout the town. And as you know, we've got contentious items going on in other parts of the town, but that's what I would say. And I would appreciate, and I appreciate you uh, giving me an opportunity to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. These, these zoning bylaws, they are, they do come from the planning board, there's no question about that. We enforce the best we can with the town's best interests in heart. And that's what we look at. Granted, it's a living document, there's no question about that. It changes to the will of the people, I get that. And we have to base each one of our evaluations on face value. What does this mean? What do they want and how is it going to affect us or this town? So.
Thank you, Sam, agreed. Uh, I'm not picking, I, I don't wanna pick and argue with you, I just wanted to kind of bring it back to, we couldn't get it right four years ago because we didn't know this was gonna be here.
Thank you. Jess?
Me? I didn't have my hand up. I, what are you asking?
Well, I saw you pop up, I thought you, I'm sorry. You didn't have your, okay. Pauline, do you have a question?
I have no question, Sam, but I just wanna share a thought. What Jeff just said about the coding and so on, you never know how it's going to work until you enforce it. It's very similar to the insurance industry that I worked in for forty-five years. And the, the zoning, the bylaws are created for a reason and then we find out that, oh, well, gee whiz, it's not what we want and, or not what we intended. So I just wanna share with you, I, I feel your pain, I know what you're going through, but we need to improve air, okay?
Yep.
We need to improve air. So I encourage you to, if you can't approve the applications as submitted, give them more time. So I ask the question, what is the urgency to approve or disapprove these tonight? Can't they not wait till next month?
What value, and I'm not being facetious, what value would it be to push off the decision we would make tonight? What value would it have to add another month to it? As I understand it, the developer, I think they're, they're trying to either get or they have a P and S with the landowner and they would have to move forward from here to purchase the property and then try to make, make it to the, to the planning board. So what value would it have to push it out another month? It, if, if we can resolve our issues here, one way or another, is there a value to hold off determinations for a month? I don't think so.
Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would say that perhaps a site visit would, if, if the board thinks that would be helpful, then that's what we should do. Again, I, you know, I look at forty-eight, section ten, which is, which are the elements that the board is to consider. And most of the stuff that I'm hearing has to do with the fact that I say desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And I would ask that if uh, Mr. Ellis and Mr. De Filippo are focusing on that, that, that this can't be granted without detriment to the public good, then please let me know why you believe that, so I can try and respond to that. But we can only go by the, you know, the requirements of forty-eight, section ten. And all of this stuff about what's good for the town, that's true, but that comes into the, the whole matter of whether or not you can grant this relief without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially uh, derogating from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. I, I believe that I have uh, made a presentation on how we meet those things. But, you know, if, if Mr. Ellis and Mr. De Filippo think I haven't, I would ask them to express their concern so I can try and answer that and maybe a site visit.
The fourth time you've said that, we, I know it. They know it, they.
Well, I know, but they, they, they haven't asked, they haven't raised a question.
You haven't even asked what my opinion is, have you?
Well, no, I, I would ask your opinion too. If I haven't convinced you, I would absolutely ask that you tell me why I haven't convinced you and see if I can give your answers.
Thank you.
But if the board thinks a site visit would, would be helpful, I'm certainly uh, would agree to that.
I, I doubt it, but I'll ask. Mike? You wanna walk around the vacant lot?
I mean, I'm not sure that would be helpful for me in particular, but if anybody in the board wants to do it, then I'll absolutely make myself available.
I've been down there.
Jess?
Um, I drove down there.
Ron?
No, no need to go.
Well, I covered that then. All right, well. Michael, make a motion.
So before I do, you know, I, I think, I, I just wanna reiterate my opinion on this one. You know, we've heard from everybody uh, this evening. It feels that way at least.
Go ahead.
Um, and, you know, I apologize to the board for uh, losing my composure there for a moment. I
I did it too.
I did it too, I'm sorry. Um, but i- in general, to bring everything back, I, I do agree with Mark and uh, Mr. Tillitson that, you know, we have had this approved for a number of years. And it, it may be that eventually we need to amend uh, the form-based code because we did the best that we could when we drafted these and approved them at town meeting. But I think it, it proves out and, and we're talking about over the last few years, when we had record-low interest rates, record-low, that we didn't get this law developed. And now interest rates are markedly higher, all costs are higher. You know, and there's some interest to, to do a project like this. You know, I, I'm in favor of this height variance. Um, I, I think if a project like this doesn't take place, we could be losing the opportunity, you know, for years to come here to develop West Main Street. Um, you know, I personally think it's a good-looking building, but that has nothing to do with what we're here to talk about. I, I do think in the scheme of things, the height variance is, you know, within our power to grant, and I think it's something we should, but um, that being said, I can definitely make a motion.
Let me hear it.
All right. Uh, I make a motion to grant a variance pursuant to air zoning bylaw section ten point five point sixteen point C, building height, to increase the maximum building height to four stories in the T point five point one Village Street Zone where three stories is allowed.
Second.
All those in favor of it signify by saying aye, state your name.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
Ron De Filippo, no.
John?
No sign.
Sam Goodwin, aye. You have your variance for the height.
Thank you.
The second variance. You pretty much covered the territory.
Um, do you have to close the hearing before you can open the next one or continue the next one?
I thought we were lumping them all together. Oh, that's right, three different votes, I'm sorry. All right, I make a motion, we close the hearing for the variance for the height.
Second.
All favor signify by saying aye, state your name.
Jessica.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
Ron De Filippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. All right. Um, what's the next one? The lot width?
Yep.
Okay, uh, town of Air's zoning board of appeals, public hearing notice, Air Z B A will conduct a remote public hearing. Six ten, yeah, right. Seven forty-four. Uh, March uh, PM, Wednesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, regarding the application by DMG Investments LLC for the property located on two oh one West Main Street. That was for you, sir. Uh, regarding application, I'm sorry, two oh one West Main Street, Air Mass. Applicant is seeking a variance pursuant to the air zoning bylaw section ten point five point one six point B, lot width, to increase the maximum lot width to two hundred and fifty-four feet, two hundred and fifty-four point one feet in the T point five point one Village Street Zone where a maximum lot width is a hundred and ninety-two feet. For zoom call-in information, please contact Espinide at air dot M A dot U S or nine seven eight seven seven two eight two two zero, extension one one four. Now, we've already had the presentation, we already know everything there is to know about this project. I'm a little bit confused as to why we have a maximum width. I don't know why. I talked to Alan earlier and he, he told me that they did that because they didn't, when it was, when it was formed, they didn't want long, narrow buildings off one direction. So the fact of the matter, if these two lots are combined, that's no longer a hundred and ninety feet, it's two hundred and sixty-something, I think it is. If I remember the dimensions correct. Is that correct, Attorney Gibbons?
Uh, two fifty-four point one, Mr. Chairman, two hundred and fifty-four point one feet.
That's a total width?
Well, that's the frontage. That's the width, yeah.
Okay.
But so Sam, my thought was like, so I, I'm originally from Littleton, Mass. And about fifteen years ago, a Toyota dealership went in uh, out in Littleton. And my only thought was maybe they were trying to avoid one entity buying up a quarter mile to put in one development versus a number of different projects. But truthfully, I, I'm not sure why we even have this.
All right. Uh, all right, troops, make a motion. We've heard, we've heard, we've heard the play.
Uh, I make a motion to grant a variance pursuant to air zoning bylaw section ten point five point sixteen point B, lot width, to increase the maximum lot width to two hundred and fifty-four point one feet in the T point five point one Village Street Zone where the maximum lot width is a hundred and ninety-two feet.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
Ron De Filippo, no.
Sam Goodwin, aye. All right. All those in favor, uh, excuse me. I make a motion to close the public hearing for the what litth, lot width variance.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
Ron De Filippo, aye.
John?
Ron De Filippo.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Okay. Town of Air's zoning board of appeals, public hearing notice, Air Z B A will conduct a remote public hearing at six forty-eight PM on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, regarding the applicant by DMG Investments LLC for property located two oh one West Main Street, Air Mass. Applicant is seeking a variant pursuant to air zoning bylaw section nine point one point three, off-street parking requirements and section nine point one point five point eight point two compact car parking spaces to reduce the required off-street parking from two eighty-eight spaces to one seventy-two spaces and to increase and to increase the maximum percentage of compact cars parking spaces from ten percent to twenty percent. For zoom slash call-in information, please contact Espinide at air dot M A dot U S or nine seven eight seven seven two eight two two zero, extension one one four. And I'll tell you right out of the box, I'm, I'm against this, period. I don't like cutting a hundred spaces out of there and I damn sure don't like reduce the amount of small cars there because if you look around the streets we have here in town, there's not a lot of compacts. People drive trucks, they drive SUVs, they drive minivans. Looking at the layout they did, with beautiful layout, no question about it. But looking at the parking, it's all unassigned. You have three stories of apartments, granted, some are gonna walk, don't know where they're gonna walk to. They might have a bus somewhere in the future. And they might even have bicycles in the future. But as it stands right now, I am against this part of it. I am against this part of it. The parking is very specific. You referenced. Our original zone zoning rules. For the parking. It's not part of, it's not part of the Form Based Code. Form Based Code kicked it right back. To our, uh, zoning rules. And the zoning rules are pretty specific. So I think this, this one is, this is wrong, this. Well, convince me otherwise, sir.
We'll try. I I don't know if I saw Mr. Diskin, uh, raise his hand on these on the planning board.
Uh, I'm talking to.
Okay.
The, I'll get to you in a minute, Ken.
Yeah, should we be talking to the board about this first?
Yeah, we're gonna talk to the board about this first, Ron. Thank you.
Have a discussion about this first.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Heard from every other quarter in the. Freaking world here.
We're gonna talk to Mr. Gibbons and he's gonna try to convince me otherwise.
So what I would say is that, you know, this is, um. Majority of, uh, studios and one bedroom units, and the expectation is that. You know, there's a high likelihood that there'll be, you know, only one vehicle for those. Uh, the development includes, uh, a a large bike area of bike storage area, so we're gonna encourage. Uh, bike storage. Uh, there is bus transportation on this area, so Mart has a.
Please. Thank you. Sorry, Tom.
Mart actually has what's called Devon's On Demand. And they have a route, uh, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but they have a route. That passes right by this, um, this project. And I think there's gonna be discussions with Mart about, you know, creating a an area for the bus to stop. But Devon's On Demand is a service where you contact Mart. And for two dollars, they will take you anywhere on this route, and the route would go to downtown air, it goes to Shirley. Goes to some businesses on Devon's, the medical center. And I think it goes up to the the Whitneyville Mall, I believe. But but so there is a bus route available on on this, uh, at the front of this property. Uh, we're we're encouraging bike use. In the town of Air, we have the, um. The commuter rail, and you know, I know that the the current, uh.
That's a little bit of a hike, don't you think, from the, from there to the commuter rail?
It's it's well with the, you know, with the bus on demand, with the bike, and it's walkable, uh, you know, where I think. I think the majority of of occupants are likely to be younger people. Um, you know, my two boys just moved into East Boston. They took one car. They they, you know, they have access to the train there, so I think. Younger people are much different. I always, I would want my car, but I'm an older guy.
Yeah.
Uh, so and and maybe Drew can speak to a little bit about this as the rationale, but but we believe that. Uh, it's. You know, that this would be sufficient. Drew, do you have anything to add on that?
Uh, not, I mean, not a whole lot beyond what you said. I mean, I think it's clear that this would serve a purpose for Devon's and that. Uh, younger professional group. And that, uh, especially with the the type of units that are proposed as well. Um, I I think it's perfectly reasonable, uh, to assume that there'd be one car or even sometimes zero cars, uh. For the, for some of these, uh, the people that would inhabit these.
How many apartments do you have? Are you putting in there?
Hundred seventy.
So if if you have a hundred and seventy apartments and each apartment has one car. You already run out of parking spaces, not even talking about. Your. Restaurants or or shops, whatever you have on the ground floor.
Chairman, if I may speak to that.
Please.
We have, we have done extensive market research on other developments in the wider area. And based on the hundred and seventy unit count, eighty-six of those will be studios and one beds. And what we find is that a lot of those households don't have any car at all. Or they share a car. And then based on the usage of the parking. Those that do have a car and that utilize it during the day, they vacate that parking space for use by the commercial tenants. We also have the on-street parking. Which is, which can be shared by the commercial tenants also. But in speaking with other property managers for other neighboring developments, parking is not an issue. And it's not something that comes up in in their interactions with the residents. They've never received complaints about a shortage.
You're taking credit for the on-street parking?
No, I'm just saying that there are six, there are, in addition to the hundred and seventy-two proposed parking spaces. There will be. On-street parking in front of the building also.
Those are not included in our calculations.
Thank you.
In the package, it it mentioned. Six spaces in front of the. The site and six across the street. The last thing I wanna do is see people running back and forth across that street. After shopping or whatever, because the traffic's gonna be. Greatly increased in the upcoming months and year.
Well, they can't take credit for those, John. Those, that's town.
Well, I'm just saying.
Parking, that's a town.
And and just to clarify. Yeah, those those on-street parking spaces are not included in our counts. So that's just above and beyond. They are not, no.
I I understand they're not included in your count. But you did point that out, and it was also pointed out in the letter that there were six on each side. And. I'm just saying, I don't wanna encourage people crossing the street there.
I I agree.
If I might, uh. And and maybe Alan can speak to this about the theory behind the Form Based Code, which is, I believe, to create. A a walking street and encourage on-street parking. So although we're not. You know, we're not saying we're counting those on-street parking spaces. But if the concern is that maybe there's a visitor, or maybe there's someone that wants to, you know, visit the strip mall across the street, although they have a big lot. But I think the idea is that this is gonna be. Uh, a a large part of walking, biking, using the, uh, the bus that's available. And I I think there was just a development approved up in Devon's, and they were talking about six hundred well-paying jobs. Chances are that those young people are probably gonna wanna live locally, and they could even ride their bike to Devon's.
That's irrelevant.
Well, well, no.
That's irrelevant. You did the same thing when you talked about the height. What they are downtown has nothing to do with this application. And Devon's has nothing to do with this application. You know, and and you keep going off to other places that are not relevant.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to do that. What I'm saying is that the rationale behind our argument that that this should be sufficient number of spots. Because we believe that.
On the basis of this. Port parcel and not about what they're doing at Devon's and what they're doing downtown. It's it's irrelevant. And it constantly, it con- it constantly comes up. When you're making your presentation about this over here and that over there, and it always. Does not relate to what we're talking about.
So I'm I'm sorry, my my point is that I think the the residents that will live there are. A demographic that will use the bus, the the bike, walk, and maybe work locally that doesn't require them to have a car.
And you've said that before. That's fine.
Right, that that's, that's the rationale behind the request.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ben, could I add?
Mr. Chair.
Wait a minute, who's talking?
I'm sorry, this is Alan Manoyan speaking.
Um. Go ahead, Alan. Ken, hold on for a minute.
Yeah, no, just to, uh, maybe provide a fish for John's comment. Yeah, with people walking in the street, we are constructing as part of the infrastructure project going on right now. A, uh, formal crosswalk, a structured crosswalk. Right there at this site, uh, for those on-street parking spaces, so that it will be. You know, uh, very safe for people to create this pedestrian environment. So, you know, John's point is well taken. But yeah, we're building the infrastructure to make it safe for people to park on the street. And to use those crosswalks. So thank you, Jeff, for bringing that up.
Uh, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Alright, Ken.
I'm about to make your job a little more interesting, uh, Mr. Chair.
I doubt that.
So. When you read the. Meeting, uh, for the the hearing, did you refer to section nine point one three? I think that said.
Ken, I don't know. I had late, I had, uh, cataract surgery a week ago. It's really, I'm really struggling to read, okay? I said nine. Nine point one point five point eight point two. And nine point one point three. Off-street parking. That's what I read.
Right, well, my point, it's it should be nine point one point two. Okay, which is, uh, nu- number three is off-street loading spaces. Nine point one point two is. The one you re- wanna refer to, which is off-street parking requirements. And what's interesting about this application is. In the application and on the front page of the drawing that's submitted. The applicant refers to the project correctly, which is a mixed-use project. And then Tom Gibbons has the, uh, Form Based Code there, Tom. You can look at. The set parking section, which is. Referred to it as mixed uses, and then it's refers to C-section nine point one. Point two D. And D is the part that's important. Cause under D. The authority having jurisdiction. For reducing the parking falls back to the planning board, and this application may not even be necessary. For parking changes.
So.
So if you look at the first page of their drawing, the very first page of the the drawing they submitted, if they wanna put it back up on this, on the screen. You'll see in those, on the drawing where it says zoning. Zoning request up in the right-hand corner over here, blow it up on the, just below that. He's he's got the off-street parking. You'll see it there, nine point one two off-street parking. Request reduced, da-da-da-da. So it's nine point one point two. Which is the correct reference. Then, when they refer to it in the. Another document, they have the. The reference in the Form Based Code. When you refer to nine point one point two under the parking requirements, it has a D behind it for mixed uses. And under the mixed uses, which is the the D. It reads that the, for building of two or more principal uses that fall into different classes of use. Uses with different parking requirements occupying the same building or premises. The parking space is required shall equal the sum of the requirements of the various uses. Compute separately, except where it can be demonstrated to the planning board. That the parking need of the uses up occurs at different times, in which case the planning board may grant a special permit. To reduce the number of parking spaces. So that this, the authority, in fact, being fell back to the planning board. Under the fact that they, the D that they're, that there's referred to here for. The Form Based Code. So in the Form Based Code District, I believe the parking requirement may in fact fell back to the planning board.
Well, in the Form Based Code, i- it goes right back to the to the rules you just read, which is not Form Based Code.
Oh, but it says, it's listed right here, under nine.
I read it. I saw it.
Okay, that's all I had. I may take the pressure off.
Yes, so it, and and Mr. Diskin, I I agree with you, and I think I've been before the planning board where we've utilized that section, and I think there's probably concurrent jurisdiction. With the ZBA and the planning board on that parking, um. I I, but I do agree that the planning board also has the authority to to waive it in this particular circumstance. I would say that if the if the ZBA is inclined to grant the relief, that 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 would work also. Um, doesn't mean that that the planning board wouldn't have their site plan jurisdiction, but I think that, uh. You know, if the if the ZBA granted the variance, that would also suffice.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Mr. J and S, yes, sir?
Somebody had mentioned that, uh. What is happening in Devon's, the the development, the people. Uh, the employment has no bearing on on this project, but. I believe. Part of the reason. The Form Base, Form Base, um. Um. Zoning had been implemented was to help provide housing for.
For, of course.
Folks that worked at Devon's, uh, didn't, didn't have housing. Because Devon's was resistant to new housing, I believe. Could be wrong, but, um, this would certainly help to avoid of housing for folks who work at Devon's.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, um. Getting rid of the parking is a big issue. Uh, as one of the chairman had, or board members had mentioned, that we definitely do not have enough parking in town for the vehicles that a lot of the residents now. I- i- if you wanna go, for example, from one end of town to the other, over at ten East Main Street, there's a unit that has seven. Seven units, apartments. And there is big problems with the parking. They're all over the street. They're getting towed in the wintertime. There's not enough parking. And when you stress that we have the mart bus. The mart bus is very, very limited on these hours. Our grocery store is not within walking distance or probably even biking distance. So we have, the zoning is set up for us now, not what we may be twenty years from now, but currently. We don't have, you know, the train is very infrequent. It's a commuter rail. It's not a subway. It it has very limited hours on the weekends and very limited hours. Uh, during the week. Um, you know, so what 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 Devon happens to do or what kind of employees they pre- they they appear to bring in with their new businesses. Isn't. People don't have, like, you wanna cut down on car, you know, compact cars and. We need parking. You need at least two parking units for each one or two-bedroom unit. Everybody, there's two, you know, two people are are working. Two people have separate cars. I mean, I'm a town resident. I'm a, I'm a butter. I mean, are they gonna park in front of my house now or park across the street? It's gonna be a problem. Not only that, but when when you talk about having, um. You know, a hundred and seventy units of, um. Housing, and now you have commercial businesses on the first floor. Now, those commercial businesses have employees. That may not live in town. They're gonna have customers that come into their business place, their places. They're gonna need parking for their customers. Um. You know. It's just not feasible. That's something the board should definitely not bend on. We need those parking spots. Per unit, or it's just not gonna work. They're gonna be everywhere all over the street. Yes, they're doing a great job widening the streets. But they're only so wide. You can't park on West Main Street, on the main road. So where are they gonna park? You know, the overflow, where where are they gonna go? Onto somebody else's, and they gotta park in the depths across the street and then walk over? I mean, we just don't have it. Um.
Alright, thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Chairman, just on on the, um, Mart On Demand. I'm looking at their, uh, what I found online for that, and it says, uh. All loops run seven days a week except holidays. And for this particular Devon's area, uh, it says that, um. I think you have to call no later than four twenty PM. On the business day. Before you want it, so it it, although it's not twenty-four seven, or or it's not twenty-four hours, it appears to be seven days a week except for holidays.
I don't think I've ever seen a bus in town.
Maybe it's underutilized. Alan might know something about it, but.
I've I've never seen a mart bus in town. Have you?
Alright, well, I can't say that I have, but I haven't been looking either, but I, you know, Mart.
They're kinda hard to miss.
And it's only two dollars a ride. It's a pretty good deal.
Yeah. Mr. Hamel, yes, sir?
I, sure, I'd just like to, um, address the point that was made about the parking, so. Our market analysis has shown that most households have one car. We're proposing a hundred and seventy-two spaces for a hundred and seventy units. At most, they'll have one car, which by our calculations and our research based on the neighboring developments. We believe that we will have ample parking for day use for the commercial tenants. That, and that doesn't even account for the shuttle bus or the bicycle lanes that which we anticipate will be used. Should this development go forward and should people occupy the building. So it's our belief that this will be ample parking for all all residents.
Will your stores stay open? Well, I, is there, is there, uh, some crossover between when people come home from work and when the stores close and the parking becomes available? I mean, if you look at it realistically, there's gotta be a transition in there. You're telling me. That the parking. The people are gonna be going to work, they're not gonna be parking there, and they'll be gone, so. The ret- retail will have use of that parking, but what time does the retail people leave? And the day people who live there come back at night? I mean, there there's, there's gotta be a transition in there somewhere.
So we don't have any confirmed commercial tenants for the building today, but we envision the those commercial spaces being rented to cafe, stuff, tile. Uh, businesses. So it's our belief that those. Commercial businesses will be opened during regular business hours. And that people will come for lunch, they'll come for coffee, they'll come to. Either for a business lunch or to meet a friend or to meet a family member, and then they'll leave within one to two hours. So we don't expect that commercial tenants will be parking there for long durations beyond one to two hours. And so even within the the commercial use. The turnover of of the parking spaces will be very high and very frequent. So we we don't believe that there will be a shortage, even as to your point, even as we approach end of business day and people. So we, we don't believe that there will be a shortage, even as, to your point, even as we approach end of business day and people start returning from work. Um, we just don't see it being an issue.
Thank you. Yes, Pauline, you have a question?
Sorry, no question, Mr. Chair, just a comment. I see mart buses all day, every day, several times a day, up and down Maine and, uh, Central Ave. But if, if the issue is parking, um, maybe some designated spots. For, you know, fifteen minute, twenty minute, thirty minute parking. Yeah, I'm not saying you are, I'm just.
No, not us, them, the developer.
I'm just throwing it out that the mart buses are on, in air all day, every day.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I see the mart buses as well.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn?
Chairman, I'm just. There you go.
Yep.
Marilyn?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I did, um, I understand that the number of the hundred and seventy two spaces allotted in the plan. Also includes the handicap spaces, is that correct?
I would think so, it didn't, it didn't stipulate that.
Uh, by my count, it, they seem to, but.
Yes, it, it includes the handicap spaces, that's correct.
So basically you're assuming that they will also be totally utilized, um. So, or. Reduce the number of available spaces because. And also I have my other question is, if you're talking about sharing the residential spaces with the commercial property. What happens on the weekends?
Good point.
Just to respond to those, those concerns raised, we don't expect that all one hundred and seventy two spaces will be utilized at the same time in any scenario. We believe that there will be ample parking above and beyond what is, what is demanded of the building. So while there will be designated ADA spaces, we don't foresee that being an issue. We will have full time building staff working in the building. We're creating four to eight jobs, part time and full time, that will include a building super, a maintenance technician, a, a building manager. An assistant manager and part of their duties will be to implement and manage a parking control plan. It will not be a free for all where people can just come and go and park willingly wherever they want. It will be controlled and it will be managed and we can tweak and, and change that parking control plan as we go and as we learn. So while we may decide that the spaces to the closest to the commercial entrances may be reserved for commercial use only. If we find that we need more commercial spaces, we can modify that, or we can reduce it, or you know, there's. There's a hundred different ways in which we can tweak the parking control plan. But again, we, we don't foresee any situation which all one hundred and seventy two spaces will be needed all at once.
Will you have all these extra employees, where will they park?
They will also be utilizing the one hundred and seventy two spaces.
So there won't be anybody around on the weekends or in the evenings to do the parking control? When the residents will be using the spaces?
The, the building will be staffed twenty four seven. And at the weekends, to your point, you know, some people will still work weekends, some people don't work weekends, some people spend, you know, leisure time elsewhere, not at home. So again, we just don't see a, a situation where it's, it's going to be. Everybody trying to park at once, we are designing, and I know this is not a zoning board discussion, but we are designing a bicycle room, which will have a bicycle repair shop. And it's going to be a very nice amenity to the residents. And part of that is to encourage this new way of living, which is a heavy emphasis on health and fitness and utilizing the environment and, and. Taking advantage of the bicycle lane, which is literally going to be on your doorstep. And not to mention the, the shuttle bus service as well.
Do you see many people commuting on bicycles in the winter?
I, I can't speak to that, but I, I know that, you know. I know there's some sensitivity in making assumptions on where the residents may work. But if they are working close by and, and one of the six thousand opportunities at Devon's, they may choose to, to bicycle in the winter, I do, I really don't know. I mean, I, in New York City, people bicycle all winter.
Um, the two bedroom apartments, um, two bedrooms usually would mean there would be at least two adults in them also, right?
Correct.
Most likely.
Our, our market research indicates that the two bedroom units will be utilized most likely by a couple. And that couple will use the second bedroom as a home office. Our, in, in speaking with residents and, and with property managers. We don't foresee people wanting that second bedroom, even as a guest room for family visiting. Those second bedrooms typically are always used as a home office or a breakaway space from their spouse or partner. So I don't, we don't really see many apartments being occupied by more than two people at any given time.
Okay, um, I myself don't know many two couple families that don't both work. And I know those that do work usually do not work at the same locations, so I think. From my own observations, when you have two bedroom apartments, you really have to go with the standard that they use to estimate the parking needed. That there would be two cars with each apartment and if that's the case, then. You're already twenty four spaces, or actually you have one hundred and seventy two, you're twenty two spacious short, just with the residents, um. That's, that's one of my concerns.
I, I think that, just to respond to that, I, I think the parking trends have changed and, and the use of car trends have changed. While it was very common for every adult to have their own car and utilize their own vehicle for work purposes. What we're finding now is that that's just not the case anymore. People do carpool, people are mindful of rising gas prices, rising household costs, they don't feel the need to have two cars. Especially in semi urban areas such as this. People are, are again, using public transportation as much as possible. And it's just not something that we see, not only in our market research of this area, but in any market that we develop in. We're in many urban areas, including, uh, upstate New York and places like Buffalo, Ithaca, Albany. We're down in markets in Florida such as Gainesville, we're in North Carolina. And we don't have any developments where we, where we accommodate two cars per apartment and it's never been an issue for us in any market.
Most of those towns you mentioned though are very large, Air is not that large, we don't have a subway, we don't have a regularly running bus. I think people in Air, um, really do rely on their cars, maybe perhaps more than your study might indicate.
Chairman, if I might say, uh, so we do have the commuter rail, uh, we do have the commuter rail, which, which the town has, you know, certainly, um. That's a mile away. Well, but the, then you have the bus on demand, so I'm looking at Mart's website, well, what I printed out from the website. Seven days a week except holidays, uh, and it says you can book all of your rides for the month at once, so let's assume that there's. Ten, fifteen people are going to take the commuter rail into Boston, Concord or even out to Fitchburg and Wachusett. They can book their rides, uh, the whole month in advance, it's two dollars a ride, it's better than, you know, the cost of the commuter rail and probably a Charlie card. So they, they can do that, I, I would envision that if these are young people that are working in town or reverse out at Wachusett. Then they'll book, you know, a pickup every morning, they'll all, you know, the, the commuter rail has its schedule, so there'll probably be multiple people. Getting on that bus and I bet we'll see mart buses in town even more, but there is alternative. To walking, biking, and there's this, um, bus on demand, which when it came out. I, I think Mart would be excited to have, uh, it utilized much more often. And, and this can be, uh, efficiently done, they can, they can get picked up and brought home and picked up in the morning. You book it a month in advance and the bus will be there.
Thank you. And Chairman, if I could just make an additional point, what we're talking about tonight is a sixty three million dollar investment in the town of Air. We wouldn't even approach that type of investment without doing extensive, extensive research. And that includes, again, at risk of repeating myself, that includes speaking with property managers in the area, speaking with operators and owners in the area. We would not put ourselves in a position where we're setting ourselves up to fail by providing not enough parking. We know that when people come to our building as, as potential renters, that's a question that's going to come up, what is the parking situation? If we felt that that, that our parking situation as proposed would result in people going elsewhere, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be proposing this. So again, just to reiterate, we have done extensive research and all market research indicates that the parking we're proposing. Is sufficient for our demographic.
Thank you. All right. Jess, Jess, you don't have to raise your hand.
I can just jump in, that's right. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm a bit dubious on the parking issue or, or at least dropping the requirement down to one seventy. But more to the point, going to, uh, Mr. Diskin's point. Um, is this, is this ZBA the right permitting authority on this, or should this be planning board when they do a site plan review?
Well, they come to us for a variance.
Yeah.
So. Trusting Attorney Gibbons' expertise, I would say we're, he's in the right place. Would you say that, sir? Yes, I would say, I, I believe that it's concurrent jurisdiction, that the, you know, that ZBA could grant the variance. Or the planning board could grant parking relief under site plan. Uh, you know, it would be my argument that if the ZBA did deny parking, that that doesn't mean that the planning board couldn't grant that. Under, uh, under the site plan provision that allows them to vary parking, so I, I think it's concurrent jurisdiction, I think. The ZBA can grant it, I think the planning board in this case also has the ability to grant it. All right, um. Mike, you want to do three for three?
So Sam, I, I'm going to be honest with you, I, I agree with Jess, I think, and I, I agree with Ken, I, I. I don't, I'm reading it word for word and it says planning board and, you know, per Attorney Gibbons, I think, even if we. Denied this. They would still be doing this with the planning board, so. I, I invite the opportunity maybe for them to withdraw, but. You know, and my, my two cents on this, you know, with all respect to Attorney Gibbons and, and Mr. Hamel. You know, Mr. Hamel cited Ithaca, New York and Albany and I think Gainesville. Those are all communities that have universities, and so my guess is that some of those tenants might be students and. I was a college student not so long ago, I didn't have a car. Um, but I have lived in Air for a decade and my wife and I have both had a car, even when we were in a small apartment, so. But that's just my two cents, again, I'm not sure. That, that we are the, the avenue for relief, I think this does need to go to the planning boards.
But Chairman, I, I guess what I would suggest then is that we're, we're willing to withdraw that particular variance. Because, uh, you know, I, I see that the board has some concerns and I think the, the idea behind allowing the planning board to. Also have the authority to reduce parking is maybe it's a more appropriate in time, in context of the site plan, uh, review. So we would request that we be allowed to withdraw the parking variance.
I have a question on that.
Your question is, John?
So if he withdraws. How long would he have to wait if the, if the planning board says, no, you have to go through the ZBA? I don't want to put him in a position where he has to wait six months to a year or something if they say it has to be the ZBA. Is there a wait period after a withdrawal?
I don't think so.
I don't either, John.
So the, uh, it, in my opinion, there is no wait period, I think, again, for this particular type of parking relief in a mixed use development. That there's, uh, concurrent jurisdiction, meaning the planning board or the ZBA could grant it, but I hear.
I understand that, right? Yeah, you said that, but we had another. We had another applicant before us and they withdrew and you said, well, you know, if you withdraw, you have to wait a year before you can reapply. So I just wanted to make sure, so ma- maybe. A continuance be, uh, pending the review of the planning board. Rather than an out, no withdrawal.
No. No. That doesn't make sense at all.
Okay, I mean, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure we weren't backing them into a corner.
So you, you want to hedge your bets if, if, will you want to continue here? And see what the planning board says and then if they don't like it, they can come back here, no, we're, it, it doesn't work that way. Well, I think, I think Mr. Ellis is thinking that if the board was to deny the variance, we couldn't come back to the zoning board for two years with the same exact variance. Correct. And so, and, and my position is that the planning board with concurrent jurisdiction, uh, you know, they could still grant relief. But, but I think it's clear to us that the board has enough concern that this, this may be a better issue to be dealt with during the site plan review. Well, you want to do it with a site plan review because you know it's going to be denied here. Well, uh, no, that being said, you want to go to the planning board now because it might be a, a, a friendlier environment. Well, I see that you have concerns about it and, and I'm thinking that, you know, the planning board might be a more appropriate place for this particular issue. And this particular. Have less concerns. Well, look, my goal as the attorney is to get an approval, but that's not my, my only reason here, I'm listening to the board, you have concerns. I, I believe that the planning board has concurrent jurisdiction and so I'm, I'm saying, well, we'll, we'll draw the application for the parking. I mean, I'm not, I'm not doing it out of any, uh, devious manner, I'm just, I'm, I'm listening to the board's concerns. And, and we'll, we'll bring it up with the planning board, which is allowed under the bylaw.
That's fine by me, guys, I mean.
Yes.
You know, I, I do think if they have to ultimately come back to us for this, you know, they would get in touch with Sam. And, uh, there would be a turnaround, so Pauline, unless this is really germane to this discussion, I, I. I'm not going to make a motion to approve this variance tonight, so you may be able to convince another board member, but it, it won't be me.
What can I do for you, Pauline?
Just sharing that recently the planning board approved, uh, several. I don't know if they're called variances about parking lots, parking spaces. For the fire station at fourteen Central Ave, so maybe Tom Gibbons, that's the place you want to go. I just wanted to share that because I don't know if you all knew that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we do know it, I know it, and I think again, it's concurrent jurisdiction, either one I think could grant it, but. You know, I, I see that this, I think that the concerns probably, you know, based on the discussion tonight. Would be better, uh, dealt with, with the planning board as part of their site plan review. And therefore I'm just suggesting that we be allowed to withdraw that, that application as to parking.
I make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw their application related to air zoning bylaw section nine point one point. Three, although I believe it should be two, off street parking requirements in section nine point one point five point eight two. Compact car parking spaces, uh, to reduce the required off street parking from two eighty eight to one seventy two. And to increase the maximum percentage of compact car parking spaces from ten to twenty percent without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Ellis, aye.
Wake up, Ron. What do you say?
No, Ron Di Filippo, no. We should go on record with the, our opinion and if the, if the, um. If the, if the applicant wishes to go before the planning board, it should be with our. Let them go for relief there.
They have to go to the planning board, Ron, there's no way around that.
All right. Still no, I think it should be settled right here with our, with our opinion on this. We've allowed them tremendous amount of variance, a sixty percent change in button parking, that's crazy.
We, we're, we're talking about.
All right.
We're talking about allowing them to withdraw. Yes or no, you don't want to allow them to withdraw?
No, I don't, no.
Okay. Sam Goodwin says aye, withdraw, we'll deal with the planning board. Thank you very much, Bill, board members, we appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion, we close the hearing for, uh. Off street parking.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Ellis, aye.
Ron Di Filippo, aye.
Damn good one, aye, next item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting for March fifteenth. These I can't approve because I wasn't there, so I can't say whether they're right or wrong, did you guys read them?
They looked at me.
Okay, I make a motion to, uh, ex, uh, accept the meeting minutes for Wednesday, March fifteenth. Twenty twenty three as published.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Jessica Gino, aye.
Mike Gibbons, aye.
John Els, aye.
Ron DiFilippo, aye.
Sam Goodwin, aye. Uh, before you run away, Pauline, all the, uh, minutes and videos are up to date now.
Uh, thank you, Sam. Yes, I heard that from Robert today. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks Samantha. She did it all.
Well, thank you, Samantha. Have a good night.
Good night. All right, guys. Anything else on the, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. Is that correct?
There was a, a new item added at, as of last meeting. I added board discussion. Um, I know Mike asked that we add that just so the board can take care of some things that they may need to take care of.
Do we need, we have housekeeping we need to take care of?
Down meeting, April twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that's not it.
Okay.
I've got dirty windows.
You have dirty windows?
House cleaning.
Oh. That went over my head.
I don't have anything for you guys this time. I knew this was big, so I, I left everything alone. Um, but I've been going through documentation for this board. Um, and I think something we should look into, or you guys should look into coming up is the rules and regulations.
Uh-oh, you froze.
No, she left.
No, I'm still here.
Oh, okay. There you are.
Um.
Rules and regulations of what?
Have not been updated since about two thousand.
What rules?
There's rules and regulations for the zoning bylaws. The zoning board of appeals can make rules and regulations to be on file with the town clerk. The most recent set is from two thousand. Um, I sort of a, maybe we should just look at it and update it and make sure everything is how we want it to be.
You want to send it out to all of us and then we can review it and make our comments? And then on our next meeting, we'll have a discussion.
Yeah.
That sound right?
Yep. I can do that. I have a, um, a couple of old copies. I'll send them off to you guys.
Okay, very good. You said something you wanted to sit down and talk about permits or applications?
Yes, and at some point, um, I've been looking at other towns', uh, ZBA applications for our hearing. Uh, they're actually much more extensive than what we currently offer, and I would like to work on updating them so that you guys have more information going into the meeting. We get the, you know, you get the information you want. Um, and, and just modernize them a little. So I'd like to sit down with you, Sam, or send out copies or various things to board members so that we can update that as well.
Let's do that.
Okay.
All right.
I want to thank you all for not muting me when I got a little passionate earlier today. I know, I know I get passionate. I do. So it's, it's my way. Thank you for hearing me and, uh, whatever you decide, you decide and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. What else?
Just me, Mr. Chair, Pauline. I want to thank you, Sam, because your board is one of the very few in town that actually post your meeting packets. And maybe it's Samantha that I need to thank. But whatever you all do, you do it well. And I just wish every board would do the same. So thank you for everything you share with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
I second that notion. Sam is literally like minutes Samantha.
Samantha. There you go.
Samantha. I don't know why I say Sam.
She is.
She's, she's doing.
Great job.
You know, it's a guy who's taken minutes before, like she's the, the, it's perfect. She's doing a great job. So kudos and hats off and Samantha.
It happens at home. My oldest son is Samuel, so we get confused all the time.
Good job, Samantha. Thank you.
All right, guys. That being said, everything's done. Let's make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, everybody have a good evening. All in favor, say aye.
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 Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.